Yeah.
We need to wait till we have four.
Have you ever seen a field of?
Yes, I have. Oh, it's spectacular. It is pretty amazing.
Okay.
Yes. I've got pictures.
So just end of the version three.
All right, so the Ben's planning commission meeting for Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. And we'll start with roll call. And do we have commissioners? Online? Okay, let's start now at the end.
John Lamont here.
Bob Gressons.
Suzanne Johansson.
And Scott Winters. All right, so agenda item number one, visitor section. So there's no one in house, but if there's anyone online who wishes to speak to the planning commission. You could raise a hand. Sorry, I don't have my.
No person.
Thing here, so I don't know.
There's only one attendee at this time and their hands raised.
Okay. So move on to the work session, informational presentation of target economic sectors. So with senior planner Damian Cernick and business advocate Cyrus Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Let me get. Presentation going. All right. Good evening. For the record, I'm Damian Cernick. I'm a senior planner with our growth management division. Pronouns are he/him. And for anybody watching online. I'm wearing, let's see. To distinguish me from Cyrus. I don't have any hair on my head and I'm wearing a dark vest.
Both wearing dark vests.
I have a little hair.
A little bit of hair.
Just a little.
Yeah. So, uh. Thank you for the, uh, your time this evening. Uh, we're here to give an informational presentation. Uh, this is a project we've been working on, uh, for several months now. To, uh, kind of get a head start on some of the work we're gonna be doing to update our comprehensive plan, uh, later this year with a specific focus on economic development. And it's, uh, identifying our target economic sectors or the, you know, sectors that we want to, uh, support and promote and make sure that we're doing what we can to, uh, encourage their, their healthy growth, um, uh, in Bend. And so we'll be, um, sharing with you some information that we've shared with the economic development advisory board. At their meetings in, uh, December and January. Uh, so what I tried to do is take two PowerPoint presentations and combine them into one. That hopefully is informative, but doesn't gloss over anything, uh, too quickly. I have about, uh, twenty-five slides and it's divided up into some sections where we can take time for questions in between. Uh, I'll be doing most of the presenting, but then I'll also be, uh, turning it over to Cyrus to handle some specific items, but also he's available to, uh, answer any questions as well. And before I go on, I should let him introduce himself.
Yeah, thanks, David. That's okay. Nice to meet you, everyone. My name is Cyrus Mooney. I'm the city's business advocate, working in the city manager's office. Um, for those of you that might not be familiar with this position. Uh, it's really intended to be a liaison between the business community and the city as a municipality and jurisdiction. So that comes in a lot of different shapes and sizes, as I like to put it. Uh, businesses interact with the city in a variety of different ways and I can serve as a first point of contact to point them in the right direction or provide information directly in whatever they're curious about or might need assistance with, um, and also service the staff liaison for the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board that Damian had previously mentioned. And, uh, that's the advisory body that's really been the working group focused on this target sector analysis that we're here to talk with you about tonight.
Do you, do you want us to ask questions per, if we have one on a slide or you want us to wait till the end?
Uh, we can do this in as we go with the questions. Um, I think what I've tried to do is divide this into sections. And so after each one, I'll see if there's any questions or um, I think you get the slideshow in your packet. Uh, I'll be referring to a, uh, report, a final report that was prepared uh, by Echo Northwest, who is the firm we, uh, contracted with to do this work. Uh, we're on version three and I think they've got some final, one final piece to add before we have version four. That will be, uh, posted with the materials for next Monday's, uh, economic development advisory board meeting. And that's something I'd like to share with the planning commission as well. So if you want to take a deeper dive into what information we're sharing this evening, you can get actually look at the report from, uh, Echo Northwest.
Is that meeting open?
Yes.
For us, if we want to pop in.
Yes. Uh, Monday is at noon here at City Hall Council Chambers. Uh, there is a remote option available if you want to do that from your office or come and join the, uh, meeting here in the council chambers.
That would be Monday, February third.
Monday, February third.
We fronted it.
Yep, yes. Okay. So for an overview of the presentation this evening, um, I'll spend a little bit of time writing some context about, uh, how we plan for employment lands in Oregon. Uh, it's something that every city has to do. It's part of their, the conference of planning and their zoning to make sure that there's adequate lands for a variety of economic opportunities. And then from there, I'll kind of start summarizing the work that Echo Northwest has been doing for us regarding, uh, providing more context on some of the trends. Uh, national, state, regional, local trends affecting, uh, job growth, including how our, our economy's been growing. Uh, we have a few slides on the selection work they did in terms of some of the research they did. Uh, looking at job growth, looking at industries more specifically to see, uh, some, to look at which industries are largest, uh, in Bend, maybe more concentrated compared to the, the state or the country. And, uh, which ones are growing, maybe kind of under the radar, are they, uh, merging industries? And then we'll finish with the, uh, minute of great reveals that we have the slideshow, but the recommended target sectors. And then, uh, we have some time for next steps at the end of the meeting because one of the things that we've asked for BDAB that we'll also ask for you is any kind of feedback, questions or things you'd like to flag for further work as we, uh, go down the road here. So as we talk about planning for employment lands, I'm going to kind of go up a level to talk a little bit about, uh, the statewide planning program. Uh, starting with statewide planning goal nine, which is the economic development goal. Uh, goal nine, like a number of other, uh, other goals has certain administrative rules we need to follow as a city to update our comprehensive plan, our latest regulations, and also with respect to academic development, look at our, um, infrastructure plans to make sure that we have not only an adequate land supply, but we've got clear codes, procedures, and infrastructure support, uh, development of our lands for employment. Uh, in Bend, um. This includes everything from commercial lands to lands for heavy or light industrial uses, uh, mixed employment. I have a number of mixed use districts around Bend and then public facilities. Which in our case includes, uh, middle of pine schools, elementary, middle high schools, parks, uh, central Oregon Community College. And, um, uh, other properties like, I'm trying to think of a good example here. I think that covers it. Terms of parks, schools and other public facilities. Uh, wanted to mention that as, um, for this additional context, if you're looking at the map, there's a, uh, kind of a light pink area toward the center left of the river, which is adjacent to the old mill district, which is the mixed use area that was established around OSU Cascades. It's part of a larger, uh, mixed use district.
That's bigger than the campus itself, though, right?
Yes.
That's all the stores over there and all that stuff.
Yeah, roughly like Simpson down to Colorado.
Safeway, all that.
Safeway, all that.
Yeah.
Is that the one that was called Shevlin Industrial Park at one point?
That is a really good question. I think it does include some of that area, uh, around Colorado, Simpson, MK. So if you're playing with that area, that used to be, um, I think it was like a light industrial area. And then over time, uses really kind of start to change and it was more, really becoming more mixed, you know, so you've got some high tech, you still have to shoot brewery, manufacturing. Uh, there's some, um. I think IT software, uh, firms over in the area and then other firms like, you know, some, you know, restaurants and coffee shops. So with respect to planning for employment land, uh, what we have here with this slide is identifying all the key components that go into that work before we get to the actual colors on the map and codes. And it comes, uh, touches on a couple of key pieces that we'll touch on, um, during the presentation tonight. Uh, these include our economic development strategy, which we hope to begin, uh, sometime soon. Creating more of a defined vision and mission regarding economic development and bend. Uh, but another key piece called our economic opportunities analysis. This is actually uh, an appendix to our comprehensive plan that looks at a number of these factors that you see here, including our buildable land inventory. And then some of the analysis that arrived at what we need in the future, uh, for employment land. Uh, the last time we updated our economic opportunities analysis was in two thousand and sixteen. Which, at which time we did a significant update to our comprehensive plan. And that was the same year that we also amended the vendor burn growth boundary to add lands for housing, employment, and also other public facilities. So with respect to the, I'm going to call it the EOA from now on because, uh, that's a lot simpler than saying economic opportunities analysis. That is a number of, uh, pieces that this work will help inform, uh, as we go forward. Uh, I think I've mentioned trends because that's a big piece of looking at employment lands. Uh, particularly trends are going to influence the, the supply and demand for economic land. Uh, one of the things that's from mech, uh, recommended, but not required is having some kind of economic development vision that provides a foundation, uh, for the work we're doing. And then, uh, the employment forecast. Uh, one of the things that we'll present to you here shortly is some of the work that the Oregon Employment Department's been doing on employment forecasting for the three county region, uh, not specific to Bend, but it'll give you an idea about what industries are predicted to grow, uh, in our region.
Figure out that one. So when you're looking at those that would be affected by any policy, strategies, whatever. Is that including underutilized and and business areas that are slipping based on what we were just talking about where it was an old industrial park completely changed? Is that included in those lands?
I think it's included in this kind of an analysis right here, the EOA.
The purple stuff that.
Yes, yes, yes. So the, I'm sorry, I should have pointed that out. The map on the right is our, um, current buildable land inventory for employment. They've divided it up into land that's developed and land that's vacant. And so, uh, one of the things that we will do as part of our work on, uh, the future EOA and updating our comprehensive plan is to look at that land supply to see uh, what might be developed, but might have some potential for being redeveloped or, um, potentially cleared and then developed anew, depending on the, the, by the improvements and and the demand for certain, uh, industries for sites.
So if there was a vacant piece in a newer, fresher office park, for example, that would be the vacant piece. But if it was an industrial or office space that was getting obsolete and falling apart and not in good shape, that would be a potential redevelopment.
Yeah, that's a really good example.
Okay, so it's pretty comprehensive.
Yes. Yeah, I think, uh, without to give it some more time that it's worth, you know, what our bill a lot looks at is, um. As I mentioned, that is vacant, clearly vacant, or has very few improvements and that's developed. And then one of the things that we'll be looking at with the, uh, the work on the EOA is looking at the number of sites we're gonna need. Less than five acres, greater than five acres for each of our, our target, uh, sectors, kind of larger industries. And, uh, that will involve, I think, a combination of, uh, diving into the data in terms of, you know, what industries are in looking for. But also maybe taking closer look at some of the properties in question to see, you know, is this something that's still being, uh, used? You know, they may be getting rent every month, but it may not be enough to maybe stimulate somebody to redevelop, like, you know, have their tenant move and then do something different. Or if we're looking at actually unoccupied buildings that
sitting.
Are just sitting there that might be worth either renovating or potentially just demolishing and then replacing with a new building.
The vacant Kmart Center.
That's a good analogy, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Damian, what, what happened with the, uh, industrial land in the southeast area? That we were gonna put somewhere else? Did we ever, is that in this inventory?
That will be part of the work we do on the update to the, the EOA. Because we flagged it with policies in our, our southeast area plan to say, when do we actually do this next? Uh, make sure that first we determine whether we need that land still. And then if so, find out where it needs to be placed, either in the current UGB or possibly at an expansion. Any other questions on, uh, what we've got covered so far? Okay. So now we're going to kind of get into the work on the target economic sectors. Uh, in terms of an overview, uh, one of the, um, key pieces for this work uh, for Echo Northwest is to do some research on economic trends. Uh, things that we may not know or not think about in the course of our work so we can better understand our, our economy. Uh, they did quite a bit of data analysis to identify those sectors. Uh, we also did this work to really support, uh, for future strategic planning. Um, not only for our economic development strategy for our, but our incentive programs. This is where I want to turn the presentation over to Cyrus. Talk a little bit more about the incentive programs that are in the works.
Yeah, so can give a little bit of background and high level, uh, project overview in terms of we understand that this report is really a snapshot of data over a set amount of time and it's not something that is a plan for how we're gonna be looking strategically in the future. And I think that's really important to understand at the forefront. So we're looking, this is all historic data that we're referencing. It's not intended to be something that is looking forward. Um, and then also just the partners that were, uh, really critical in doing some stakeholder outreach to in the formation of this report. So we've been working with OSU Cascades, uh, the Ben Chamber of Commerce, Economic Develop, Economic Development for Central Oregon or Edco. Uh, Business Oregon, we're all consulted as our consultants were bringing this report together. So we really hope that it's a accurate representation of what our other economic development partners are seeing in Bend and across the region more holistically. Uh, but in regards to the incentive programs that Damian was referencing, uh, at the start of this year, our Urban Renewal Agency opened applications for, uh, tax increment financing program that can be site specific. Um, and I don't know to what detail you guys have been, uh, pervy to that program, but, uh, our intent is that through developing these target sectors, uh, we can have that incentive program be tied, uh, to those specific businesses that would apply for that program in the future. Um, so go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong from informal discussions. I think we haven't used TIF that much, the tax increment finance that much, or we haven't best.
Um, it's been primarily for housing affordability, um, and there is still primarily a, a housing affordability track, if you will, with that program, but there's also an employment growth. Uh, option for folks to apply for, which is, yeah, more, uh, relevant to this process, right? And if you're familiar with the enterprise zone, uh, the requirements are similar, but gives the city a little bit more flexibility in terms of the types of businesses that can apply for the abatement.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now kind of dive into the work that, uh, Echo Northwest did. Uh, as we start looking at context, uh, for, uh, Bend, looking at trends. Uh, like Cyrus said, most of what we're looking at will be a look back uh, from two thousand and seven to roughly two thousand and twenty-two. Using some data from the Oregon Employment Department for Bend in terms of the, uh, numbers of employees and jobs in different industries. But we'll also do a little bit of a look forward, as I mentioned, with their, uh, projections for employment, uh, for our central Oregon region. So with our first slide, uh, on the left, you've got a graphic that shows you our employment growth over the last, you know, roughly fifteen years. Uh, I didn't want to mention that twenty twenty-two was the year that we had the, uh, the most recent data from the employment department. Uh, we added just under fifteen thousand jobs during that period. I think it was like fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four about. Uh, we grew at just under a thousand jobs a year, I think roughly two percent per year, uh, during that period. Get rid of that so I could see.
We, we got a growth period in there, but we got the tail or the beginning of pandemic and, or the tail end that's still in there. So there was some effects.
Yeah.
Negative positive.
Yeah. This period includes the, kind of the valley of the real estate recession we had at the end of late two thousands. But it also includes the other valley that we had, uh, during the pandemic. So you've got those two points in there. And, you know, what you'll see is that our, our job growth, um, not too far away from what we saw at the state level, but also, um, in the teach county. And then, uh, on the right side is a graphic that shows, uh, some of the employment projections for central Oregon. So Crook, Deschutes and Jefferson Counties. Uh, for the next ten years, uh, every couple of years. The employment department will look at regional popular, pardon me, regional employment projections. So we get an idea from them what they're seeing with respect to growth over the next decade. With those different sectors, you'll see that some of them with the light green were growing above average.
Projected.
Projected to grow above average, pardon me. And then the, this, let's see, three, four, five that were projected to grow below average, uh, during this period. Uh, I think during this period, um. It was like about a ten percent growth, uh, region wide, uh, over that ten-year period of two thousand and twenty-two to, uh, two thousand and thirty-two. Here's some of the, uh, economic trends that really are kind of significant for Bend. This is where, um, Echo Northwest did a little bit of more research instead of just looking at the data. Uh, what they shared with us is that our, our workforce is growing older, meaning we've got a larger share of older workers. Um, I think if you look at Cyrus and I, you get an idea about who's who, kind of part of that, that group. Uh, and they're not being replaced, uh, fast enough with, uh, new workers entering the workforce. Uh, with respect to, uh, commuting patterns, um. A lot of Bend workers also live in work in Bend, roughly sixty-one percent of our workforce lives in Bend and also travels to a job in Bend. Uh, the other thirty-nine percent, uh, commute to Bend for work. So we're actually serving as an employment hub. And there's like another, uh, let's see. There's seventeen thousand people that actually live in Bend, but commute elsewhere for work. So they're leaving Bend to go work in Redmond or Primeville and some actually, uh, you know, work in places like Portland where they can, uh, catch a day flight. We also asked Echo to look at, um, remote work to give us an idea about, uh, how that's changed kind of before and after the pandemic. Uh, in Bend, kind of before the pandemic, roughly two, twenty nineteen, roughly nineteen percent of our workforce was remote and that increased to twenty-eight percent in two thousand and twenty-two. So people actually were working from home, uh, to do their work. And then, uh, they also looked at kind of shifts in some of our high-growth industries. Uh, one of the things I wanted to flag, just because you probably already saw it on the graphic, is that number three hundred eighty-two up at the top. Uh, so we saw a really significant increase in the number of people working in the kind of management of companies industry.
Which, if I could ask the question that when, when, when management of companies is a term. That means corporate executives managing their own company. What, uh, how, how do they describe it?
I think that's a pretty good but simple explanation of that, that category. Uh. It's something kind of new for Bend. We've become a, uh, I don't want to say a hub, but we're starting to see growth of people who work in Bend, but their job is actually manage a corporation or manage a company.
So more executive level, management level.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really a little bit of management of companies.
Yeah.
Spans across multiple industries.
Yes, multiple owners, yeah.
Yeah, could that be like almost like self-employed or you have a business that's just a one-person business? Yeah, I think in this case, there's, these are people that are actually, um. Part of the covered employment pool, uh, for the Oregon Employment Department. So they'd be working for somebody else managing the company. Yeah. Um, I did also let, want to flag out a couple of things in this graph, um. During that time period where you see here kind of after the recession kind of starting to end and before the, after the pandemic. We also saw a pretty significant growth in food and beverage manufacturing in Bend and healthcare. And, uh, one of the things you'll see contrasted there is the uh, growth in these respective industries compared to the state in the US that we'll, uh, talk about later in terms of the number of jobs uh, concentrated in a particular industry in Bend and comparing that with the state and the country to see if those are industries doing maybe a little bit better in Bend because of the proportion of jobs is higher here than elsewhere. Pardon me. Uh, getting close to wrapping up our, our talk on trends, um. One of the things that Echo shared with us is that a large number of our firms, our establishments are, uh, small companies, roughly I think sixty percent are like one to five people. Uh, most of them have one hundred employees or less.
That, that was kind of an eye opener, but how does that relate to state or national trends? Because typically it's all this huge chunk economy. Are we similar to national or are we more because of tourism or?
You know, that's a great question that we just, uh, don't have that answer for you right now.
Yeah, because those little guys keep us going.
They do keep us going. Yeah.
I thought the data though was that, um. Oregon in general, there was a lot more small entrepreneurial businesses and that central Oregon had a higher percentage than the state of Oregon had. So I mean, that kind of bears that out, but there is some data out there that would show that. I'm sure I've seen that before.
Yeah. Before we leave this slide, I also wanted to turn, uh, the presentation over to Cyrus for a little bit more about, um, entrepreneurship, because one of the things that Echo learned and shared is that we are a, um, a hub for entrepreneurship, meaning we've got a good ecosystem for helping people start businesses. And there's a number of opportunities for venture capital as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think as you guys have already kind of referenced, um, sixty percent of our firms being between one and five employees and seventy-nine percent being between one and twenty-five employees. That's a huge share of our firms here in Bend that we're seeing that really how do we structure our services and resources to be able to support and scale those that are already here? We know that it's an extreme barrier for folks to move their businesses in sight here. Oregon does not rank, uh, very highly in competitiveness across the nation. Um, I think that we have some really unique attributes that we have here in central Oregon for lifestyle and amenities that people are naturally attracted to, but how we incentivize and encourage the growth of these businesses is something that we're really hoping the data in this report can help solidify and, uh, give us a clear direction in how we do that most effectively. Uh, but also I think is a huge kudos to the partners that we have at the Small Business Development Center at COCC. We have a really robust chamber of commerce that is very active comparatively when you look across the state and across the nation. And obviously Edco, so we have some partners doing some really critical work, uh, to help support those firms that are a significant portion of the firm size we see here.
The, the last one there also struck me, like five percent, and there could be three businesses or whatever, but with five hundred and one more or more employees, those are some big, big companies. And I noticed that on our list that I may be wrong because you can correct me, uh, for, uh, uh, economic development commission. It didn't seem like it was a big company of five hundred and one plus. I know it's hard to recruit folks when they're that big. Is there any thoughts to that, that we need to do that? Get a couple of the bigger dogs on there and
Yeah.
Give their perspective. It's hard to do.
Sure, healthcare is definitely a, a huge piece of that, um, being a hub for healthcare basically east of the Cascades that people will travel across the state for certain services. Um, and a lot of that portion too, I think that's included is in government and more public entities. And those aren't necessarily industries that we would incentivize, but do have large, you know, they're large employers here. So it should certainly be noted.
Yeah, okay. So it's more of the, the government or the healthcare and less of the corporate corporate. But could be depending on where we go with the sectors. Okay.
Right.
Okay, and then one final slide on trends. One of the things that we asked Echo to look into is what we need to consider regarding the potential impacts of climate change. Uh, especially since one of our, our largest sectors in Bend, one of our most successful is in tourism. And, uh, one of the things they asked us to kind of think about as we go forward with our, um, not only land use planning, but also our economic development work is, uh, considering the potential impacts on tourism, especially with extreme, extreme heat and drought. Those days where we have wildfires that contribute a lot of smoke and, and, uh, impact air quality. Uh, but also somewhat related to the work we do with, uh, uh, planning for employment. You know, looking at those, um, utility costs, the, you know, potential for property damage. And, uh, you know, what this is suggesting for us is how we partner with other organizations that we might not have partnered before. Uh, especially when we think about emergency management or public health. Um. Or with respect to utility costs, you know, the, the power of gas companies to, you know, let them know what we're working on so they can plan accordingly with, uh, their work. So now we'll get, uh, get more into the more interesting parts of our presentation here regarding the selection of our, our target industries. Um, with the work that Echo did, they tried to focus on these kind of key variables that you see on the left side of the slide where they looked at our, our largest sectors. Uh, those that were fastest growing over our look back period. Uh, one of the things they spent quite a bit of time on is look at those that were more, more concentrated in Bend where uh, the proportion of jobs in a certain sector like healthcare was much larger than what we see like at the state level or at the federal level in terms of their share of overall jobs. Uh, they also looked at what industries might have unique characteristics here in Bend where, or kind of characteristics Bend provides these industries. Uh, because it seemed to be doing better here than another. Uh because it seemed to be doing better here than in other parts of the the country or the country as a whole. And then finally, one part of their their work, their contract was to uh. Kind of interview and talk with some of our stakeholders like the Chamber, Edco, Business Oregon. And find out from them, you know, what's what's happening that we're not seeing reflected in the data because the data will tell us. These things, but maybe not answer the question of why, you know, on the surface. So with respect to the fastest growing sectors, um some of this may not be a big surprise, but. Uh the top three uh were also some of the sectors that are our largest and. Um in central Oregon and Bend in particular, uh healthcare, uh professional and business services, and then our leisure and hospitality. Uh sectors, uh these all grew uh better than average over our look back period. With respect to concentration, uh here's where Echo looked at both our. Employment change over that period in terms of which industries added jobs, but also looked at. What industries are more concentrated here in Bend, meaning. There's a larger proportion of jobs in this particular sector in Bend than you might see nationwide. So with this graphic, everything above the line of one suggests that we've got more jobs in those sectors than we might see nationally. Um one would indicate that, you know, the proportions are are equal. If they're below the line, that means we have a smaller share of our jobs uh in a certain sector than we might see uh nationwide. And during this period, you know, if you look at the graph kind of the upper right part. Uh arts, entertainment, professional services, construction, healthcare. Uh these all grew pretty well during that last look back period. And these are all industries that have more jobs concentrated here in Bend than they would uh at the US level.
The the question I got on this one was the healthcare and social assistance. A couple of charts from healthcare and education.
Yes.
You can mix a lot in there. And then social services, I think with healthcare, that gets muddy. Is that an echo thing or is that a trying to pull a national trend out or? I can see the two put together because sometimes social services is because of the poverty level or.
Yes.
Income level or the education level.
Yeah.
Uh I I don't know how to parse that out if they're.
That's a that's a good question. I think something we can clarify. What I understand is that that larger category uh category of healthcare and social assistance is mostly jobs. In healthcare, so hospitals, clinics, um private practices. The element of social assistance is much smaller, but is included in that category because oftentimes they are interacting.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So is education included in that one then too?
The previous chart had it.
Yeah, if it's in this category, it would be uh considered private education. Uh whereas education like um. Local schools, uh university would be part of the government pool of employment.
So it wouldn't be on this chart.
Correct. And let's see competitive sectors. So uh Echo also looked at um. This question of why certain industries are doing better in Bend, meaning they're. They've grown more in Bend. They've got a greater concentration of jobs in Bend. And uh what their analysis got to a point is kind of telling us. That a certain amount of growth for each of these sectors can be attributable to, you know, just overall economic growth in the country. Um some due to the growth of the industry. But for those industries that saw growth beyond that, that suggests we've got something here in Bend that's helping them do a little bit better. Uh so it kind of gives us the idea of like how well you're doing compared to other um. The other country as a whole or other sectors. But I think it's something that we'll need to, you know, look at whether economic development planning and strategy, you know, why is? For example, healthcare doing really well. If, yeah, we are a hub, but there may be some things that we're we're not aware of that's helping them grow uh in Bend.
And that's really where the qualitative data component comes in, uh where we can do some outreach targeted to these companies that have experienced. A certain amount of growth over the course of these seven to 10 years uh and really try to. Tell that story and have it be compared to what we're seeing in the data um in terms of the. The quantitative analysis that Echo's done, but doesn't necessarily give us that full rounded picture.
Yeah, if anything, it tells us that there's something to look at here because they're doing really well in Bend. And then uh to kind of wrap up on this section, as I mentioned, that uh uh the team at Echo. Uh did do a number of stakeholder interviews with our our partners. Uh I named some of them earlier, but I know they included the also included. Um central Oregon, your governmental council, a small business development center. And uh this is where I want also to turn the presentation over to Cyrus to kind of talk about. You know, what are the things that kind of emerged from these interviews that may not show up at the data, but something we should be considering with our our work in our target sectors?
Yeah, I think um what came out of the stakeholder interviews and what we see a lot of is that we have a lot of different partners. Trying to work towards this common goal, but having not necessarily something comprehensive that we're all following in terms of what Bend's needs and is. Kind of aspiring to more specifically. So we would really like the city to take more of a directive approach in what that vision kind of looks like. And I think. The target sector work is the foundation that can lay out a broader economic development strategy that we can move forward with. Uh we have some. Really, really strong regional partners that are doing critical work uh in this area, but. Um you know, the city of Bend hasn't necessarily taken that that step to be a leader and. Hold everyone together and understand who's working in which lane and how we can work collaboratively as effective as possible. So. Uh like I said, we're really hoping that this is a step in that direction and.
So proactive approach rather than reactive.
Right, I think Bend has been really fortunate that we've seen the economic growth that we have somewhat naturally in terms of. The lifestyle and amenities that people want to live here and they want to open their business here and. Uh we've transitioned in terms of being more of a timber town and to a much diverse uh industry type of clusters that we're seeing. And I think the data reflects that, but now that we're at a point where. Commercial vacancy rates are limited, industrial land is limited, it's expensive, housing costs are expensive. So sustaining a workforce is an increasing challenge. Now that we're at this point, you know, we I think need to be really intentional with the industries we feel like can really thrive and succeed here. And yeah, we're, we want to have the data to be able to make those informed decisions.
So speaking of industries, I think uh one of the things that the analysis led to is is looking a little bit more at uh kind of specialization and growth. Uh in terms of looking at how industries grew better than average over that look back period. But also their their concentration. And so what Echo flagged for us are those that you see here in these, you know, kind of four quadrants where. Those that saw above average growth, but also a higher concentration of jobs in Bend. Uh they kind of identified those as our leading sectors, uh and some of those won't be surprises based on, you know, some of the data we've shared. Uh what's interesting is the sector or the quadrant just below it where um. They saw above average growth, but their concentration of jobs in Bend is, you know, kind of below the US average. These are kind of some of the emerging sectors, um the management of companies again, wholesalers, certain financial activities. And they also established, you know, those uh sectors that are really well established where. We've got a high concentration of them in Bend, but they're growing less than average. They're still. Still key parts of our economy, but they weren't growing as fast as some of our leading sectors. And then the last uh last quadrant really refers to those that are stable. Uh their concentration has increased, they've grown maybe less than average, but they're still important parts of our our economy.
If you mean, if you don't mind, uh one thing that I think that is a little bit unique about this, you'll see a balance of. Export oriented sectors and then some locally serving sectors. And for economic development strategy that can be a little unique in that. Enterprise zone is only available to traded sector businesses. Business Oregon is primarily primarily focused on. Traded sector businesses. We know that is a huge factor in. Increasing our tax base, which is really what economic development is in the crux of it. Um. But having a tool that can be a little more flexible to really acknowledge that. A thriving community has to have these community benefiting businesses here and. Uh having their business model being sustainable is critical to that overall wellness and livability of a community. And I think we're we're trying to talk the talk, if you will.
So so if they're onto their sectors statewide. And we have some other things that we need help with. They're they're not fine graining enough is what I'm hearing, to help those new sectors or our sectors.
Yeah, I think their their programs are just really tailored towards um the large law industrial traded sector businesses and. Looking to have programs that incentivize the growth of them specifically.
So if we had a business area, a business park that was part of our plans. And we have people wanting to come in, but we need to clean up infrastructure and signage and lands, the whole thing. They probably wouldn't be that helpful because it might not fit one of their categories if it's more of a mixed. Business area, knowing we don't have these gigantic 2,000 acre sites. Uh so that's that's interesting for the strategy in the future, how we attack that one.
Yeah, I think our intent is to be able to have more tools. I think the state's tools are great and I think we. Continue to utilize them as it makes sense, but having something else in our tool belt could maybe give us some more flexibility and options for businesses that don't. Mid that fit that specific mold.
Yeah, I think if I could just add on to that briefly, you know, with the the work we do and growth management and coordinating with our other divisions in the city. With the work we do, we're focused again, a couple of key pieces. One is making sure we've got land supply so that people have choice in the marketplace about. Whether they use existing space or whether they want to build a new building for for what they're doing. But also we tie that with our infrastructure planning so that we're, you know, can make sure that we've got. Uh potable water, we've got wastewater collection and treatment, we've got a transportation system. That becomes really uh not a huge decision factor for somebody where they look at a site going, all right. It's vacant, I've got water sewer and streets to it. Great, then I can talk to Cyrus or Business Oregon about what incentives they might offer me to um come to Bend.
But don't we have a limitation in terms of particularly manufacturing because of transportation to get? Goods out of central Oregon? I mean, the train goes the wrong way. I mean, you'll eventually get to Portland, but it's a long ways. Uh. You have to get over the pass if you use a truck or a plane. And I don't know, did they start flying from? Redmond to Portland again, but. I mean, that's that's the reality of trying to bring some businesses here that. While this, it seems like the state ought to recognize those limitations when they're looking at these programs, but it also seems like we should. Be paying attention to that so that we're not chasing after businesses that could never financially make sense here.
Right, no, thank you for that feedback. I think that's something we do recognize, which is we're not on an interstate highway. You know, on Highway 97. And um while Redmond's airport is not too far away. Um there are a lot of companies that have located their their manufacturing in Redmond because the airports are right there and they can. Get things flown to other areas, you know, quicker than coming from Bend to Redmond.
And and it's limited as far as cargo too. It's not a.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh so to wrap up, you know, kind of, uh and I think you if you've looked at your presentation over the weekend, you've already seen this graphic, but uh. What Echo recommends are kind of these four uh broader categories of uh target sectors. Uh you will probably notice that there's some overlap uh in a couple of them, for example. Uh bioscience is something that we want to promote uh or think we should promote with health systems. With the healthcare industry, but also with technology and innovation. Uh on the topic of manufacturing, I did want to highlight, and I think this was brought up in a prior slide, that our. Manufacturing tends to be smaller and more specialized, uh but it does show up in uh really all four of these um. Columns or categories. If you look at, for example, food and beverage manufacturing. Uh not so much in the health systems, but also in uh building for growth and then in technology. So manufacturing that's more specialized, maybe not traditional, big site uh manufacturing and then shipping to, you know, areas outside the area.
So the two, two to the right are the professional tech approaches. Because I was I was kind of going back to what you were saying on the manufacturing, if if. Our interviews are, you know, acknowledging that the bigger stuff is going red. For a lot of reasons, probably affordable housing too. Then us pushing manufacturing is really. The small stuff. I mean, that's what I was trying to get like wooden building product. Yeah, what what do we?
You know, that's a good question. You know, I think uh if I can try to give a maybe a hypothetical example, you know, the. Manufacturer we're talking about maybe more specialized, maybe more starting up to see if something is viable. And then what we're hearing is then people might move to Redmond or another area to do maybe the larger. Manufacturer where they can get their product out to larger marketplaces.
So outdoor product manufacturing with all our ski shops and. Professional shops that get you on the slopes or in the water, that could be something they're developing or learning and then it could go to a bigger hub.
Yeah. Okay, so to wrap up, uh in terms of our timeline. Uh again, next Monday, yeah, we're giving our our final report presentation to BDAP. It's an open meeting. It's at noon to one, no, noon to two, pardon me, noon to two here in council chambers. Uh we're also going to be talking with the Human Rights and Equity Commission. Uh one of the things we're trying to do is engage them as well as we kind of prepare for the work we're going to be doing to update the uh proprietors of plan. Go back to BDAP in March for their their final recommendation to council and then. Uh as of now, we're on the council's agenda for April 2nd. I say that as of now because we're getting closer to budget season, so. We may run the risk of uh getting rescheduled, so something else that uh could be attended to by council. And then before we wrap up, um. Thank you for all your questions, even the ones I can't answer because those are ones I can work on, but. We wanted to see if there's anything else you'd like more information about, but also any other issues that you think we should be. Taking into these policy discussions regarding uh target industries.
Yeah, I have one. Um looking at and some sometimes these the definitions change from chart to chart, so it's kind of hard to. Get it straight, but um one of the things I was looking at is uh the page that had the um. Average pay per employee and looking at some of those accommodation and food services. Uh it's pretty low.
Um is this the one you're looking at?
Yep.
Okay.
That one. And then I'm looking at another one that's leisure and hospitality in terms of employment projections, things like that. I guess, how do you, you know, a lot of this is seems like. We're talking about businesses and getting certain businesses, but. In terms of the type of, I guess, the the overall equity of people and making sure that we don't. You know, oversaturate low income. Sectors. I mean, how how does that factor in here? And how do you find that balance? Because, you know, you can't just have all high paying jobs. It's not. Feasible or wanted, really. Um and like, I guess, where does the uh? Where does kind of the the average pay per employee factor in to all of this?
That's a great question, and I think it's something we need to work on as we do this, continue with this project and and then going forward. Um I think we're mindful that um. There are industries that are doing really well in Bend, but they don't. They're paying, you know, kind of below average. And so. Those are industries that we're trying to um kind of support to make sure they can still thrive here. And then, you know, looking at other industries that might. Pay better than that and seeing how we can do, what we can do to support them as we go forward. And that I recognize it's kind of a general answer, but that's something that we'll need to work on as part of our our economic development strategy.
Yeah, if you don't mind, um I think the other graph that you're referencing, not this one, the in projected growth was for the region. So that's just something to note that that growth won't just be in Bend specifically, but in terms of.
But a lot of it will be.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and it's again, I think that balance between. The export oriented and community serving and the leisure and hospitality is, we've kind of referenced tourism's a driver. That a lot of people move here because they want to go out to eat. They want to go out to the breweries and that is a component of the livability that is enticing. For why people want to be here and live here. Um I think. Talking with our partners at Visit Bend, workforce development is a huge component of what they want to focus on when they see that number of. Projected growth in the region. How do we have that be an industry not just where. You're waiting tables for 20 years of your career, but you get in and you can actually grow into more of uh, yeah. Wouldn't say an executive level position, but there's more growth potential within that industry than you might think off the cuff. Um and that might be. More of a pipeline to more of a trades or uh less of a education required type of field that folks would have to jump into.
Yeah, and I imagine most of us have worked those jobs.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, like you said, graduating from that.
Yeah, and I think Visit Bend is really trying to invest in that and there's a state agency called Orla, um the Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association, and that's. That's a huge component of what they're trying to focus on is exposing folks at a younger age that this can be a viable career path that hopefully they could be. Exposed to earlier on in their career.
Has there been any um thought given to like risk analysis? Uh climate change and cyclical industries. So when you look at uh tourism, um construction. Uh health services, the first two. Uh, health services, the first two are very vulnerable. Um, and it could reinforce one another. It's just been a concern of mine that um, the city has. Uh, too many of their eggs in too few baskets.
Sure, I think that's a really good point, I think. Historically speaking, Bend is in a better spot than it has been just because of that diversity of industries that we have seen us transition to. That said, uh, I think there is a lot of risk, I don't think we're at a point where we've done a robust risk analysis and the points that you're making, but. Um, something interesting that did come up uh, from a report of Visit Bend is that cyclical nature of how climate change impacts various industries and. Napa is an example of a, a wine industry, wine heavy industry that. Really relied on that for their tourism and economy and uh, they had factors that really transitioned folks to coming up to the Oregon Valley. Uh, and visiting the Salem, Salem and McMinnville area as a result of that, and so. You know, one community might be challenged and it might be an opportunity for another community in the same token, and so. Those are things that we want to be aware of and try to be as proactive as we can and uh, taking advantage of those opportunities when they arise, but. In terms of recreation and tourism, I think focusing on what indoor activities for recreation we have available and can we expand those opportunities? So we're not as apt to the threats of a smoky August day, um, and. Not rely on our outdoor amenities to be the sole factor in how people come here and enjoy their time.
And if I could just tag on this briefly, I think one of the things we've tried to do with this work with Echo Northwest is. Uh, kind of dip our toe in the water a little bit and try to understand, you know, what is it that we're, we're not thinking about, but we should be when it comes to. Uh, climate change in particular and how it's going to affect not just tourism, but other industries that we haven't. Haven't thought about yet or haven't seen those effects just yet, and so. Uh, that's one section I would invite you to, you know, please take your time to look at and let us know if you have any other. And if feedback or questions that this might raise, I think, um, you know, as I mentioned, one of the things that suggests to us is that there's uh. Some additional work we need to do regarding out of a development, not just with our, our current partners, but others that we might not think about working with this closely. Like the utility companies, like our emergency responders, like our public health uh, team at the county and the state, so we can understand. What we need to know to better prepare people to not just come to Bend to recreate, but if they're looking, looking at doing a business here that might involve. A lot of outdoor recreation time, or they might have higher utility costs. Uh, during an extreme weather event, you know, what they, what they need to know and, and what we can do to support them.
So one of the things I wrote down was undergrounding electric utilities because we keep seeing that these. High wind events and arcing are causing fires and we're, I don't, I don't know where that falls, but um. My question though, uh, uh, maybe this management of companies is where this is, it's long been my feeling that. This would be a great place for companies to have their corporate headquarters because everybody would want to come to the home office for their. Annual meeting, right? Exactly, and so I, I don't know if that is management of companies, it's under the health systems, so I was worried that it wasn't. Looking at a broader, I mean, uh, I assume that that huge growth in that area was. Be primarily the pandemic and all the people who would bring their job with them when they brought their computer. Um, and I, but I, I think to me, that's the real opportunity because it's not necessarily uh. A huge resource extraction industry, um, it's not necessarily manufacturing, so you don't have the transportation issues that you would have. Um, but there could be good uh, economic uh, development for Central Oregon and, and. In that area, and I, I didn't really see that here, or maybe you're thinking it and it's just isn't in a. In the terminology.
And one of the things I'm hoping is that the, once the final report's ready, we can share with you that may answer more of your questions or at least maybe raise more of that you haven't thought of yet.
Well, I was gonna add on to that because I'm amazed, I'm in a new part of town and just taking, I'm just thinking while you were talking, six different neighbors, one. Is a uh, high-tech corporate consultant. He works in the morning and the skis in the afternoon every day, and he's out of the Bay Area. The next one just moved here last, uh, three weeks ago from Hawaii, has a beverage company, couldn't take the, the taxes and the cost of land and cost of food. He's here, some of it is still over there, he's bringing it back, and he works out of the house all day. Uh, another one is with Meta, Facebook, she works out of the house all day long and maybe makes a trip to Chicago to get with the gang and have their meetings. And then another one is another high-tech and on and on and on, and they're all. Totally sold on our, our, our city now, they're, they're here a year now, two years and they're, they're, they're staying. So I kept thinking, if we tap into those entrepreneurs that are loving the fact that they can work out of the house, but if the headquarters is nearby, it's even better.
Yeah.
They could check in when they want the hybrid folks. And so there's a whole kind of, uh, it's back to your one of five, it could be a deli, but it could be people in their house. With one or two employees that are doing something, the other one, uh, he's with a startup company that's starting to take off. And they got eighteen people around the country, so I keep thinking with our lifestyle and our uh, livability. And all the menu of things we can do, that's one we got to really rock on. The other thing I want to thank you for, uh, you know, clarifying that you guys are looking at some of the sub, sub. Our properties for, for these vacant lands or, or under about, because I've been driving around and our newer stuff, according to our code with staff is doing, it's just top notch. I mean, the, the, the corporate parks, the landscaping, the streetscape, there's a lot of pockets of business areas that are really not in great shape. And I've ran into one, I went off the road, kind of, I went, oh, there's a business park back here, and it was all gravel road, but it was a lot of land. So I think that the more you probe down in there, to say, what, what is this, is this a future like this, what cleaned up, or is it a complete redevelopment? Including, and I don't know if we have that many here, but parking lots. I have found in other cities that we still have old parking ratios of five to six per thousand, and nobody's filling those parking lots up. And Motorola, for example, in the Midwest, they were talking about putting new development and housing around the parking lots because we're too big. You know, they were just overgrown, so I, I really appreciate that. Um, and I know that we're taking central core and trying to mine some development there and get bigger and better there, but I look up and down Route ninety seven and it doesn't show the community like it should. When you get behind the ring of Old Mill, beautiful upscale, you go, wow, this is cool, this is the corporate headquarters. Get on Route ninety seven, different ballgame, and little by little, people are, you know, churning over, but I think we could do better there and mine some better properties. And then the last couple things um, were uh. Oh, the business parks back again, down in the strategy, not now, but you know, let's, if it's identified by our staff. That it's a business area, let's clean it up and let's work on what we can do to get the infrastructure right, and not just roads, but the signage and the, and the wayfinding and the image. And it doesn't have to be super gold, you know, high level, but something that really says, this is a place I want to like business. And some of those guys are often the shadows and I get stuck back there sometimes looking for company. They're hanging in back there, you know, so anyway, good work and I'm looking forward to coming out bigger and harder than planned.
Thank you very much. Well, I think, talking about the remote work, and by the way, was that twenty eight percent, was that remote work where it's not in Bend like? Work from home for a Bend company, it's work for something. Outside or that's just, that's just straight up working from home.
You work if you're from home and you're in Bend and you're working in your, out of your home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I think that's a good plug for expanding the neighborhood commercial opportunities. Because when you're, it's one thing if you have, I mean, my work, I, I travel, go to work and um. And, you know, there's places I can walk to from, from work, but if I was working from home, I don't have anything. Uh, nearby and I think, I think, you know, where it's like, what, your guys' work that you're doing where it starts to provide, we'll send out feelers or whatever to other. Other departments, I think that finding that synergy there is really, really good idea. And I wanted to say one other thing, and I was thinking about Bend when I was down in, I think I was down in Monterey and. For as touristy as Bend is, we don't have a string of shops selling knickknacky. Uh, keychains with mountains on it with somebody's name. I mean, I go to some places that are really heavily relying on tourism and it, and I think I would never want to live here, like, nobody lives here, this is all Airbnb's. And it just, it changes the area, and I think with how touristy Bend is. Somehow we've done a great job in not necessarily having that, we do have too many floaters during peak seasons, but. You can walk across the river.
They're just stepping on giant.
Swimming all through the river, it's way better.
One is, I, I'm amazed at some of the retail in our downtown, because I've been to a lot of towns that can't support shops and we've got some really strong, strong shops. I mean, really, and I don't mean it's always got to be high end, but just really good stuff, but the other thing that I've noticed in my work is that. Companies and developers are starting to get more into, what is the city, the county, the region doing for emergency services, like Bob and I and others have brought up this thing about. Fire safety and the whole thing from A to Z, a comprehensive look. And they're starting to knock on the door and ask, you know, how, how, how is your building department, how's your planning department, how is your public works, how's your police and fire, but also. How are you emergency services? In my former town, they had a three inch thick emergency plan. And one of the things that wasn't in there was how to help the businesses once things went down with, with COVID. So we've just put another chapter in so that businesses can quickly get on their feet rather than invent the wheel again.
Right.
So that's something with all our emergency services folks in this region, because of the fire, that maybe we could actually market to your company. You're knocking on the door, but then they're coming to you, we got this, this, and we got one of the best emergency service plans, you know, if we could do it.
Right, and having that be part of the, the pitch or.
Or the pitch.
Part of the marketing.
And here's what happens if this happens, here's what happens here, here's in trouble, not making it up as we go along.
That is a conversation that's currently underway, um, with our, we have a emergency services director and uh. That is a component of the action plan associated, so thank you for bringing it up and definitely is top of mind and I think will continue to be.
Well, and also because if there is a catastrophic. Cascadia subduction zone earthquake, Central Oregon is going to be, like, our hospital's going to be the hospital. Our airport's going to be the airport, the fairgrounds is going to be FEMA, I mean, so having all of that, well, well, whatever. Whatever the emergency services uh, coordinating agency is of the future, but.
Oregon might be on its own.
We might be, but, but still, those emergency services being robust and coordinated is. Good, is, has, there's a bigger piece to that as well that we should be aware of anyway, I'm sure you guys are, but.
Bob sent uh, the council and the commission really an article and a note about, let's keep pushing the idea. Approaching the fire differently instead of, well, we can get a truck to your house to get the fire out, what happens if we gotta get the whole neighborhood out? But he had an article in there that just shocked me, I was talking to my wife about it, and she's a daughter of a firefighter. And there's no city that can put out a major fire like they have in Los Angeles because the water that's set up is to put one house out, two houses, not the whole city. And so that's one thing, let alone evacuation routes, but boy, I tell you, if I was a corporate CEO. And I'm bringing headquarters here, bringing staff, I would like to really know, and if we could push it, that'd be great, with a real plan.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Well, thank you again for your time this evening, um, you've got our contact information with the slides if you think of any questions and then. Later this week, as we get the materials out to B D A for their meeting, I'll also share them with Renee to distribute to you if you're, you're reading pleasure.
And if you can just check in that sixty percent was small business compared to state and feds, I think it'd be helpful for the rest of the crew that's going to see it.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And what, what's the date of the final presentation to City Council?
If they're second right now?
Got it, thank you.
April second, City Council. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed we don't get bumped for uh, budget related matters as we get into budget season, but. Just to share with you, that's a very real risk.
Renee will keep you updated.
Alright, thank you, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Um, now communications, uh, reports from planning commissioners. Uh, oh, go ahead.
No, I just had one and we've nibbled at the discussion, that is the idea of getting a list of the team in the front end of this, niddles for the applications. Because the neighborhoods are getting confused when we see Joey Shear on there and we don't know who Joey Shear is, what. Firm he's with and who's the developer and who's the traffic engineer, so is there any way just to expand the application and put the team up front? So we wouldn't also find, fall into the situation Scott did where he, he knows.
Oh, I just didn't see it.
Team member there, and it could be buried, and I think it was buried in there, and so I had to spend time in the neighborhood saying, oh, this is who I think. The developer is, then we had to dig down versus they got a quick note and it's just on top, Joey Shear. Uh, A K S engineers representing Joe Blow developer and Bob Smith traffic engineer, I think it's five lines and then it'll be helpful for us to.
Yeah, I think we can definitely look at that, and I, I know what you're referring to on the staff report or the, yeah, we list. On the top two or three high level agents for the property owner developer, but not all of them, not all of the consultants.
Yeah, they didn't say who they were, so I got three calls on the uh, Discovery West and I think it was Joey Shear who did a great job presentation. I don't know, let's find out, they go, who, who's he and who's the developer and who's, is Paulish coming or not coming and who's on first, so I think it's just right up front.
The master plan, there is no developer though, that's the, that's just development code.
Then, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, and I think generally we do have. If it's a.
Yeah, that might be one of the most complex examples when we have like a, a waterway overlay zone application. Pretty much everyone listed on the staff report is who's involved.
Yeah, when Joey got up there, he put the whole team, but I remember digging and digging and digging and, and, and it's, you know, we sooner or later are going to get it from you guys, but I think the neighborhood. Districts that are posting that to have their meetings, they're like, who, who are these people?
Okay.
And if it's an LLC, maybe there's a little extra you could put on the back and then, on the line, it's Smith and Jones developers or something, but I think a couple lines would help.
Um, so we had the uh, um, goal setting. Unfortunately, I thought, well, it was, okay, everyone go up and talk, and I thought she had said. Talk about your accomplishments, and so I went up there and I talked about the planning commission accomplishments. And uh, and it was, we were supposed to do accomplishments and then also our uh, our asks, so they have it in written form, but um. I wasn't able to do any special playing for anything and my uh, jokes I had were wasted because I wasn't able to say them. Um, but the general, I mean, it was, it was a longer meeting, but I would say that the, kind of the. The general gist of it was, there was a lot of emphasis on cross pollination and, and trying to get more engagement. Uh, not only from commissions and committees to interact with each other, but then also city council, um, having that. Uh, involvement as well and, and just trying to, trying to connect some more lines, and I thought that was a really good. Uh, conversation and it didn't seem like there was anyone who said, no, uh, that's a bad idea. So, cause yeah, sometimes we are kind of on our little planning commission island, and especially since we're more of a, you know, reactive. Body, we don't, we don't sit here and set policy and, and that kind of stuff that it, um. Yeah, it'll be nice to, to see where the city council kind of takes that information and figures that out.
And, and thank you, um, John and Bob and Scott for being there that evening, um. Really good representation from all the advisory boards and committees, I thought, and along those lines of. Collaborating and sharing information, I can try to do a better job too of sharing with you items that might be of interest to the planning commission. Other advisory bodies are discussing, might not be a matter that comes directly to you, but something you've raised and. Just to let you know, oh, another committee is actively working on that, say, um, and then there was, as Scott mentioned, um. Great support for when a particular issue or. Work effort is underway that warrants a joint meeting of some committees, it seemed like there was support for that too. So not just for the sake of getting together as a joint meeting, but, well, here's the thing where we're trying to. Tackle this question or issue and it'd be really good to hear everybody's thoughts and questions on it together. So we'll try to keep that in mind too.
And to get more input into that issue from other folks, I thought that was great. Um, and on that note, the, today was the last day, I think, of the little goal sessions with the council, weren't they at the library, I think? So are they then?
Today's was at the library.
Yeah, that was, and they're bringing that together into a big pile of stuff, it's be sorted through. Because then the mayor was talking about, one of the thoughts we had was the liaisons, you know, it's hard for a council member to go to everything.
Yes.
That if they would come maybe orderly and then actually give us a little report on what they're doing so we're in sync with their goals and sync with their direction. So she was thinking, so why don't you come in spring quarter and present the new goal package, whenever it's ready.
We do have a new uh, counselor liaison to the planning commission. We do have a new uh, councillor liaison to the planning commission, it's Steve Platt. So that is our planning commissioner, planning commission liaison for the council. And he was at our table, Bob, so I got to meet him.
Yeah, very nice guy.
This is good work. Uh, there, there's a lot coming out of this and the more we get honed in, the better. Yeah.
So Melanie didn't want to do anymore, huh?
No, no, she was the liaison. She's not now.
Oh, yeah, Mel, yeah.
Alright, oh.
That's it. Anything else?
Well, I did, I, as John mentioned, I did forward a, a, an email and two articles. Um, asking if there was an opportunity for the city to look at preparedness, specific to fire, um.
Was it Discovery West?
That had some provisions for, yeah, fire mitigation things. Maybe there's some like Ben requirements or uh.
It was done through their CCNRs. There was, there were some policies that.
Yeah, there was, that was.
Directed them to do that, uh, but then they, they put them sort of the enforcement elements of them in the CCNR. So it's. Fire hardening, exciting, some.
Which makes sense.
But then there's also like some landscaping issues.
Yeah, you can't do that with the valid code, because who knows if someone plants a shrub and.
Puts mulch down instead of peak, peak, peak gravel.
On that note, cause uh, again, the neighborhood district sent in a note to planning with Catherine, I think was the Discovery West planner. About the uh, your Berns, the folks are saying, uh, Skyline Ranch Road was going to be the main route out of our area. Other than um, Shovlin Park and it's not finished. And at a neighborhood meeting, Brooks Development and Polish said, oh, I think we're going to finish in twenty eight, twenty nine. That didn't go over too good. So we asked formally as part of input. Could you work, meet with them again and say, can you do better than that? Cause it is an escape route. And even if I think if someone, uh, I think Suzanne said something about even if it's a.
With a gate across it that's accessible in an emergency.
Never heard and I'm wondering if you could just maybe check with her if.
Not sure who, who was I in emergency? Oh, Harry, Harry Carl?
Uh, whoever the senior planner was for the uh, Discovery West project. And we didn't hear back. She took it in because she just got back from vacation that time, took all the notes in and the, and the email. But we haven't heard back.
Was this for one of the neighborhood public meetings, is that?
Well, we had the meeting and then I was out of town, but our other board members chaired it and they asked, oh, a lot of people are asking and they said, oh yeah, twenty eight, twenty nine or something like this. Like what? And, and a week before, one of our folks who was here testifying that last meeting was told by emergency manager, oh yeah, you know, Skyline Ranch Road is a. Way to get in and out, especially for emergency. So the gap is there. And so the thought was, can, is there some way to bond it or, or fund it upfront to get it built? Or at least do a, a, a temporary grading.
There's a lot of history on that, as you can imagine, just making that connection. It's been planned for years and years. Um. But, oh, can't remember when we did the West Side Improvement Group WIG agreement. It was probably in twenty seventeen or eighteen. After the UGV expansion, we worked with all the property owners on the west side, um. Root to do, it's called a statutory development agreement and it's a decision that had to go to council. And they each kind of. Put their heads together with their developments and said, okay, we're going to be responsible for this road or this roundabout and they all kind of divided things up. So that's how they, they're sharing.
Pieces.
Pieces of Skyline Ranch Road. So it's not just one developer. That one missing link is just one developer, but in that agreement. It's very specific that, that the connection shouldn't be made until the roundabout is built at Shovlin Park Road, which has been done.
Which is done.
And the roundabout has been built at Skyline, Skyliners and Skyline Ranch Road. So right by. The Universalist Church.
And we heard it's coming this summer.
Yeah, so once those are in, then it's really just making that connection through.
So, so I think.
Oh, is that Tall Land or? Um, no, it's the one, I can't remember which.
But Renee, if, if there's just a chance to talk to Karen, just say, where did we go with that?
Thank you. Now I know, now I understand.
Yeah, we can check on that because I'm interested as well.
And you know, fifty homes popped up overnight. I'm like, well, they're getting close to the money, but let's.
Oh, yeah. I only have one thing, planning, planning manager report, we will have a meeting on February tenth. It looks like we'll probably just have one item, uh, waterway overlay zone application. So if you're not able to attend, please do let me know as soon as possible. So I know if we have a quorum or not, and I know Margo will be absent.
So if we don't contact you then, we're good, right? Or do you want us to contact either way?
I assume you're coming if I don't hear from you.
Okay.
Put it that way.
Trying to make your life easy.
Yeah, and yours.
Cool, uh.
Uh, I don't have anything to report. Um, I will say we are working on. Uh, the budget, as Damian and Cyrus were talking about, uh, we do a biennial budget and this is where we're getting into the real meat of budget season. So, um, we're not making any substantial changes to the community and economic development department, um, in fact. Adding any FTEs, um, say we're living within. We're basically just replicating the budget that we've had so far, which seems to be working out pretty well. I think I'll leave it at that for now.
Cool, thanks. Awesome. Ian, anything?
Nothing for me.
Alright.
Move, we adjourn.